I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Cartman? Here. Alderman Lockward? Here. Alderman Bellings? Here. Alderman Hinni? Here. Alderman Knight? Here. Alderman Stevens? Here. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors here on a nice pleasant evening. We'll get out of here pretty quick and everybody to get back home safely. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve of the consent agenda.
I'll say it.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Public comments? Corey Hall, Corey and Mike?
He was gonna meet her tonight.
I think Corey's here, but Katsy is here.
He was gonna meet her tonight, but he lives an hour and a half away and couldn't make it due to the weather, but plans on attending the next meeting.
Adam didn't leave any comments for me. I don't have any particular ones other than I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year as we go into the new year and everybody be safe. Alderman reports. Alderman Hinni?
The only thing I'd like to say is appreciate all the work that the city had to put in on taking care of the roads. Seen them a lot and the roads are doing better than they could have been, so thank you for those guys. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Lockard?
Yes, I'd like to say the same thing to all in through or getting out on the streets. Kind of surprised for them, thanks what we have. We just also want to know what we're going to do about the new sidewalks. Will the city be maintaining those and clearing them off or will we be back?
I believe the agreement with MoDOT is that we take care of the sidewalks. But let me look at the agreement and then also the city, the business owners typically take care of the sidewalks, so we'll work with them as well.
Thank you. Alderman Ryan?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, approach him.
Alderman Stevens?
I too, Mr. Mayor, approach him. Would like to thank the city workers that have been out all day working on the roads. It's a pretty rapid response compared to how fast the snow is coming down, so I think they did a good job and those guys appreciate that effort that they put forth.
Alderman Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, approach him. I can echo the same sentiment on the work today that the Department of Works has done. Reiterate compliments on the holiday decoration. I travel around a lot, sometimes even, hear a lot of people comment on how beautiful decorations are in Odessa and their work staff and everyone associated with it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
All right, we have no old business, new business. First item is an action item, approval for siding materials to be used on the 4A project. Mr. McGurran with the Planning and Zoning Commission, if anyone has any questions? We have some additional information that we maybe didn't have the last time. There are Alderman Ryan?
I'll move we approve the siding materials requested for the bank, according to bank.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second. I had a question in looking at the ordinance that is there. I realized that it allows both of our boards to approve the material that is not required. Right, right. For it to be used, for something different to be used, it requires approval of both I guess what I struggled with was what material is not being used that this is going to replace?
Or what is a material similar to this that deteriorates pretty rapidly? This material that brought forward is, it actually, builders don't even use the old stuff when they're using this because of its durability. It's easier to maintain, it just lasts, so the maintenance on it's a lot better than the old stuff. Most stuff is composite wood that wasn't put well together and this is all about wood.
Okay, so is, if we didn't approve this material, what would the likely material be used?
We have to know, I think that would be up to.
Representative from the bank might have some idea. Because it specifically, the ordinance specifically lists some items. It lists obviously stone, it lists brick, it lists stucco or approved gypsum concrete plaster materials, and I don't think this material really fits any of those categories.
No, again, that's why we had to go around.
Okay.
Okay, so since it doesn't fit, should it make, would it make sense to put it in here so that the next time it doesn't have to go through this? I'm just throwing that out there because if we're going to approve it this time, there's a good chance it's going to be approved the next time. So does it make sense to go ahead and get it in here?
Definitely.
I mean, if it's a material that you're saying is better than.
But we didn't want to go back out till we were, you all were. But I don't know if that makes sense or not, you know, because if we wanted to put it there and you didn't like it, then where are we at?
Alderman?
I talked to another person on the planning board and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the way that he described it to me was that they basically left this open like this for the approval process in case that there was something to come up that you could get approved, but it would depend on, at least where it is this way, it depends on where it's at and what else is around it and everything like that. And why, he told me that he approved it was because it is right up there next to a residential neighborhood and this will bank, will look more like, fit more in with the surrounding area.
In that CRT, it would be required to be similar to the area and product does fit in the area. Would we necessarily agree with that being on Second Street? Probably not, you know, before they're in town.
Well, that's why I was saying if you put that particular item on this, then it may work in one area, but it wouldn't maybe necessarily work in another area, and I think that that's why it's not on the list, is the way I took it.
So the pictures that we have and some of the other information that I've looked at, there's, this is the product that is intended to be used more like the lap size I think that is shown in these pictures. I know there's, this product also comes.
That's kind of odd, I understand.
In a vertical manner also? It comes in a vertical pane? Do you know which is?
I don't think we're planning on using it in a vertical plane.
Okay. The drawings at City Hall don't show it in vertical.
Okay.
Shows it just as. It just shows it as.
It's like the picture.
Kind of like how these pictures are.
So it looks more like a log cabin in a way. It's going to be stacked.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is an action item for the approval of a purchase of a John Deere gator. I believe this is for the wastewater department.
That's correct. This is for the new wastewater treatment plant, Northwest Treatment Plant. This is a budgeted item, but because it is above $10,000, we needed approval from the board. And again, it's a budgeted item that we've placed in there, but we just need approval to make this purchase.
Do we have more motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of a John Deere crossover.
It's a John, yes.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? It's all along.
I'm sure this is something that maybe we think we need, but I have hesitation even though it's a budgeted item with the new understanding of the cost of the water treatment plant in Southeast, how much that's going to cost, that maybe we should think about putting that money toward repairs of the filters instead of weight pro-. I don't know. To me, I just think it's, seems like maybe we need to be thinking about how we're going to pay down the new filters and everything before we just start going out and throwing like $10,000, $11,000 on a John Deere at this point.
Alderman Stevens? I have a question. Is there one of these type of vehicles utilized at the other treatment plant?
Yes.
So there is one out there. So what do they normally, what's the plan to use this vehicle for? I mean, I know it's at this treatment plant, but what is that, what's it going to do? I mean, what are we going to use it for?
They carry tools, they carry equipment. They have to move a pump from one place to the other, carry a pump in it. It's all for operations, so it's just, it's a tool that they use at Southeast Plant and they would use it at the Northwest Plant. The footprint of the Northwest Plant is larger as well, and when you're carrying tools from lab down to the UV building, that's quite a distance.
They don't have a truck over there to pick up of some sort?
They do have a truck.
When, fairly new?
Mm-hmm.
And they're fairly new?
Yes, it is.
So they have a truck at both plates?
We will.
Will.
We approve the purchase of a new truck that hasn't been delivered yet to the Northwest Plant. So there we pick up trucks at both locations.
How long have we had a gator at the Southeast Plant?
Since 2006 or '08 or something like that.
When did that plant?
Oh, since, oh, since we.
Since that plant went online? And has it been the same one? I mean, is, so the expected life of a gator at this, at either of these facilities is, we can say at least nine years then, if it's been there since 2006. So it is a, while it is a reducisable expense, it is an expense that is spread over a fair amount of time and there are places that you can go with a gator that you can't go with that.
They also use it, they would also use it when they sample, do soil samples for land adaptation.
So if they can use the gator to get, like we said, they can get into different spots with it for the soil, what's the truck used for?
Sometimes they have to haul the responsible for all the sprayers, or the spray refill of the round plants and just not all your work, because they won't plant all the time. They probably plant the plant. Just actually anything that they have to use it for anything that they can get on here. They pull trailers with it.
Because the only concern I have is we're not going to share resources, right, at the plant? Once we get it online, they're not going to share human resources, correct?
There will be some sharing of human resources. The lab person will work both labs.
Okay, so that's why the truck is there. But the other plant has a truck as well.
Correct.
And the only reason I'm asking this is because we're going to get a new truck and it's going to be out here and then it's going to set idle for some time because we're going to use this gator, we're going to use it at some times, and then we're going to run into this situation where 10 years from now, this truck has 50,000 miles on it and now is, you know, we have to get a new one because it costs too much to maintain it or whatever, like we're at now. So I'm just asking those questions because.
No, and I understand the question. I, you know, it's hard for me to answer operational questions when I'm not at the plant every day running the treatment plant. So this was a request that came from staff that does run the plant every day. So I know there's various uses for it. I don't know all the details of that. Some of the ones that I've listed, I know have been used before, to carry pumps, to carry tools, to do the soil testing, those kinds of things for a gator. And I do know that we have staff that help with meter reading, so they need a vehicle to come in town to do the meter reading.
We have all the systems with lift stations.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries five. Next item is a resolution approving change order number six for CAD excavation for the Northwest Wastewater Treatment Plant, Resolution 2015-29.
Dan Miller was not able to be here tonight from the city, so I'll certainly answer any questions that you might have. What this is, is a change order in the amount of 22,914-29. Two items that would be covered. One is a tabletop in the lab that because of the configuration of the electrical outlets, the tabletop didn't fit correctly, and it's important that the tabletop fit correctly. If you have water spilled on the tabletop right now, it can run down and run into the drawers within the lab, and you don't want to contaminate the drawers of the lab. So there needs to be a lip and then also there's grooves underneath the tabletop to help with that, to ensure that there's not that kind of spillover. The second item are valves that when we got with engineers and our chief operator, we discovered that we couldn't totally isolate the filters. And this is important, there's documentation within your packet talking about this, but the reason why the operator and then once we got with the engineers, why this is important is to completely isolate the filters for cleaning, to ensure that that water is out of there, it's not potable water, obviously. If there were ever a breakdown, you could isolate the filters and pull them out. So it's basically, there's already filters on one end, this is putting filters on the other end so that we can have total isolation of those filters, putting valves on both ends, I'm sorry, I said filter, but putting valves on both ends so that we can have total isolation of those filters. And I will add, this is not going to increase the cost of the contract. Money from the contingency fund will be used to cover this cost, the 22,000.
I have a motion and a second. We have further discussion?
I just kind of have a question. I like that's kind of the engineers. They didn't see this in their design. That's my question.
Of course, they're not here to answer. I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're not here to answer. We asked the same question and again, I guess I go back to our chief operator pointed this out to them. We went on site with our engineers, we had a discussion, and we feel like our chief engineer or chief operator, along with the engineers now, feel like it's best to totally isolate these filters. The way that it was designed wasn't going to give total isolation, and there was some confusion in terminology. They were saying isolation, but the operator was saying you cannot totally isolate the water that's in those filters. That's what we need and that's what we want, and that's where the discussion landed.
Not that it has to do with this one, but do they put, did they put these valves in the design of the filters that we're going to replace at Southeast Plant?
Those already have valves.
They already have. They already have isolation valves.
The additional cost on the countertop?
Yes, sir.
Is that for a totally new countertop? So are we buying two now? We bought the one that didn't work and now we're buying the one that does?
That is correct. Because the one now does not fit. It has to be totally replaced. There's no way to put extensions on it yet.
So we're basically.
Correct.
Two countertops.
So who would get on the gold?
I don't know. Do we get it?
You should, you're giving it away.
We're buying.
We will keep that countertop.
Even if we do nothing more, even if we do nothing more than put it in a surplus auction, we should at least get paid for it, we should get.
I'll make sure that is done.
Is that a non-returnable item?
I can check on that. I don't know.
See it as a.
Yeah, probably estimate I.
It's probably custom made. And who designed this? We can still check. To go with the cabins? Our engineers? See?
Yes, but, yes.
If you read this note, the way it sounds is that CAD actually found that it wasn't correct and they called the engineering firm and then they went ahead and they made a, template or whatever to spread it, and then that's what they had CAD do. But CAD actually called and asked them, is what you want?
It's most likely an architect, not an engineer, made that design, but it is still part of the, part of the plan.
So it's still going to cost the 22,000? Whether, whether or however you word it, I mean, next.
Well, no, the 22,000 is the total of those two projects. The bulk of that is the valves, and then the countertop is.
Twenty, is like $2,000.
$2,000 or, I'll look at the entire quote, but it's all lumped into one change order.
And I think the point that Alderman Lockard was making is it's still an additional cost of 22,914. It is part of the contend, of the contingency, so it's not costing us more on the original contract.
Correct.
But it doesn't, we're not saving the 22,000 that we were saving.
Right, right. That is correct.
And that is what he was pointing out, and that is, and that is the case. Which we can come back and say thank you to the engineers. Positive. Positive. Alderman Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so I remember the correct, I think line six, the contingency valve, should actually be 60,999.81.
Are you on a certain page?
Okay. The contract, change order number six.
On page 16.
I don't cycle well on the computer, so I don't print it out.
Yeah, he's on page 16. Okay. But I believe he would be correct.
Ten cent reduction.
Yeah.
So other than these two items in, is the plant, seems like everything else is going according to plan and operation?
Yeah, there were a few electrical items that we corrected and we did a punch list. We'll do another final walkthrough, but other than these two items, I think we're close to opening up the plant completely. Is that correct?
Or we filmed right now or we had those?
Any other questions? Motion and a second on the floor to approve Resolution 2015-29. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is bill number 2015-21, ordinance number 2913, an agreement for emergency service mutual aid.
This is a carryover from last Alderman meeting, Board of Alderman meeting. We just cleaned it up by giving you the actual agreement that's included in your packet. And again, this has been reviewed by council and they've approved this agreement. This is really a formality between the Odessa Fire District and Odessa EMS, just to have mutual aid amongst those two agencies.
And actually, do we have a motion already on the floor with these people from the last time?
Actually, I think that's what the minutes is.
I'm scrolling back here, you're going to find it. I believe you did. And most of the postponements you've done, so does that motion stay on the, on the floor?
What they were going to expect us to do is pay in rent and stuff at the fire station.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the lease agreement. This is just a mutual aid agreement. And the actual, the lease agreement is being discussed by the fire board. And I know that they've met once to discuss that, but I haven't heard where they're at. So, I haven't heard any reply from the fire board yet on the, on further out the lease agreement. As soon as I do, I'll bring that back before the board.
Okay. Any further discussion? Zing and all those in favor? Motion carries. A second reading of bill number 2015-21, ordinance number 2913, an agreement for emergency service mutually.
I'll make a motion if we approve bill number 2015-21, ordinance number 2913. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Zing, not voice vote?
Alderman Stevens?
Yes.
Alderman Carmody?
Yes.
Alderman Lockhart?
Yes.
Alderman Wright?
Yes.
Alderman Heaney?